Good evening, everyone. Will the Thursday, May 11th, 2017 Dune City Council meeting please come to order? It is 7:00 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mayor Rebecca Reidy here. Councilor President Meyer.
President.
Councilor Wells.
Here.
Councilon Allen.
Here.
Councilon Montgomery.
Here.
Councilor Forsythe.
Here.
And I would expect Councilor Orr will be coming very soon.
Yes, okay. Would everyone present please rise with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Councilors, I'll undertake a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Please move. Sir.
It's been moved to second that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, moving on. I'll undertake a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda with all those minutes.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved to second that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, moving on to announcements. And there are a number of announcements this evening because this is a special time of the year. The potter dinners are blooming. And, you know, it's just a festive time because we have our triathlon coming right up. First announcement, the Oregon News Triathlon in Duell, Oregon is scheduled to take place this Saturday on May 13th. We're desperately in need of more volunteers. I think we were getting pretty close. There's been a few volunteer meetings held this week. And it was just really exciting to see volunteers out and learning their duties and receiving their flags and different things like that. It's kind of a very exciting time around here. Rep. Kendall, do we have enough volunteers?
We could use more.
We could use more, all right. So, please give the City Hall a call. Oh, boy. Okay, so, is it kind of too late?
People can show up on Saturday.
But they do need to fill out a volunteer sheet.
I'll have registration forms, but they're timepiece.
So, if you're planning to show up to volunteer on Saturday morning, you will need to register, so you're covered by our insurance. So, we would really appreciate that. So, when you register, you'll get yourself a pretty green t-shirt that we will all wear on Saturday. So, all right. You want to check in with Rep. Kendall or Stacy between 6:00 and 6:30? Yep, really early. Number... Any other thing on the triathlon that we need to say? Just come... Oh, let the record show, Councilor Orr is here.
Thank you. I apologize for the delay.
So, we're all going to show up and have a good time on Saturday. Let's hope it doesn't rain. So, next announcement. AED and Medical Emergency Response Training will take place on Tuesday, May 16th, beginning at 9:00. The AED is the defibrillator that we have in the back of the room that jumpstarts a person's heart if it has stopped in an emergency situation. So, I don't know what the AED exactly stands for, but that's what it is. And, so, anyone can attend that. So, please notify us if you would like to attend. So, sufficient materials will be available. The cost is $15 per person. Staff and City Council members' costs will be covered by the city, of course. So, if you would like some emergency response training with that little mechanism, come on down. Announcement C. The Budget Committee will meet on Thursday, May 18th at 3:00 to consider the proposed fiscal year 2017-18... Yes, we are thinking ahead already. 2017 and '18 budget. There will be a memorial hall for a longtime Dune City resident, Jerry Wasserberg, on Thursday, June 8th at 4:00 at the Meeting Hall at Honeyman State Park. We sometimes call that the Yert, so... Mr. Wasserberg's family, I know, would appreciate that, so... Next, Darling's Resort and Marina is organizing a fireworks display on Saturday, July 1st, and is looking for donations. And we gave them a nice donation last council meeting. Also, they would like us, everyone, to know that on May 27th, the Memorial Day weekend, they're having an open... It's called an open season barbecue. And they're going to have food and games and beer and just kind of a little, you know, celebration and community gathering. So, let's, you know, plan to show up and support our only restaurant. Is the 27th a Saturday?
I think it's a Friday.
It's a Friday? Okay, thank you. Is it a Saturday? Thank you. Oh, the calendar's right there in front of my face. All right. Okay, so, we have another announcement from the Governor. Yeah. The Governor is holding a press event on May 19th in Cottage Grove to mark the progress Oregon has made in the last 20 years protecting kids from tobacco. As you may know, 2017 marks 20 years since the start of Oregon Tobacco Prevention and Education Program, which has meanted Oregonians' commitment to protect current and future generations from the toll of tobacco. So, Friday, May 19th, at 1:30 PM, you can see the Mayor, meet the Mayor, at Cottage Grove High School Library. And the address is River Road, Cottage Grove. And final announcement. Birthday wishes. Always do this last. Birthday wishes to Public Works Superintendent Richard Palmer on May 1st, me, Mayor, on the 20th, and Councilor Tom Allen on the 29th. So, happy birthday, Councilor. Refreshments will be served this evening after the meeting. So, come on down and wish us all happy birthday and have refreshments. Is that all the announcements?
As far as I know.
Okay. All right, that was a lot. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 7. Is our citizens signed up to speak this evening? It's nice to see a small audience this evening. Sometimes we are here by ourselves, but it's very nice that you all attended this evening. Thank you. No one signed up to speak, okay. Under New Business, we have ordinance number 244, amending Chapter 10 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances relating to the form of ordinances which amend our supplemental code. And this will be at the first reading. Okay, I'm just going to follow this verbatim, Jamie.
All right. That's what it works like. I got fingers crossed.
Okay. A proposed ordinance requires two readings before it's enacted. Our City Charter, Section 34.3, provides that both readings may be read by title only, A) if no Councilor member present at the meeting requests it to be read in full, or if B) if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member and all requirements for posting and advertisements have been met. Have all requirements been met for posting and advertising?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Does any Councilor desire the ordinance to be read in full? Thank you, Laura. If yes, okay. I will undertake a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we read this ordinance by title only. We vote. Any discussion on the ordinance before we vote? It's like a housekeeping thing. So, all right.
Mayor. Right now, you're only voting whether to read it by title only.
Oh, all right, very good. All right, so, no discussion, no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Thank you.
Now you read it by title only.
I will read Ordinance 244 by title only. An ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 10 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances, entitled General Provisions, amending language regarding the form of ordinances which amend or supplement code in Section 10 dot 17. So, we're going to go to Item A on... Which is New Business Item A, in case anyone wants to follow along.
That was the...
Yep. I will now open the public hearing.
No. Now you go to...
Let's just go to Item B.
Oh. On the agenda. Because we have too many things under public hearing.
This is fine. Approval of the I... Are we going to have the second reading?
Later.
It's later.
I'm going to public hearing.
Okay, all right. All right. Approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Lake County for road maintenance. Lake County...
You have copies of the proposed intergovernmental agreement in your packets.
Yes.
Lake County has, again, offered the services to the city should we need them. Now, we do have our own Public Works Maintenance Supervisor who is doing what he can, but if we get in a crunch, this would give us something to fall back on. We need to. Or if it's something that is really big.
Okay.
And this just needs approval? We're going to have to do a reading.
Right, it's just approval of the signing of contract.
And you need a motion?
Motion and instruction to... Who's going to sign, whether it's the Mayor, me, or who? Whomever, I guess is proper.
Finished with the new business, go to public hearing, Item A.
Well, we have to have a vote if we're going to make a motion on this.
I will make the motion.
Second.
And the motion is for?
Approve the intergovernmental agreement with Lake County for road maintenance.
All right. Any further discussion?
Do you have a question?
Certainly.
I noted in here, under scope of agreement, Item 2.2. It says, "In the event these procedures are followed, any damage claim is filed, City will, as between the parties heretofore, assume liability for said claim." I'm just curious to know if someone else is performing the service, why the City then assumes the responsibility, the liability?
Because they're performing the services on behalf of the City.
Okay.
That's just their request. We can... We can't find out. I just don't know if they'll accept it, I mean, you know.
This is standard... Standard work.
This is the first time I've ever seen an IGA from the county for this. I don't know if it's routine.
Do my fellow councilors have any thoughts on that?
That sounds pretty normal. Liability would be ours.
I'm thinking it would be no different than hiring anyone else. You know, they'll have a certain amount, and then we'll have a certain amount, and we'll go back and forth and end up with whoever's got the deepest pockets. It's kind of the same. I do have a question on the topic, though. It doesn't state on here, Jamie, whether you or the Mayor is going to sign it. I would assume that this really needs to be from you as the...
It's whatever you guys choose. Whomever you guys choose.
In importance with this, my thought would be that we would need Jamie signing it because it's going to be something that eventually is going to have to be... If there's an emergency, she's going to have to be the one making the phone call. It's going to have to be rapid. And if you or Sheldon doesn't happen to be here, I think really she should be the one making that decision.
Yeah, my fault.
So, I'd like that introduced into the motion, that the City Manager is the one that is signing the agreement.
Okay. Going to amend the motion?
Yes.
That the City Manager will sign it?
Absolutely.
Second.
Okay.
Again.
All right, so, any further discussion on this? It seems okay with that. Is this an annual thing? I do have a question.
It's the first time I've ever seen it.
Sometimes it's annual, but we don't know. All right.
I thought this said three year.
Councilor Orr.
The rating is three years. Under 5.2, three years. Right.
So, it'll come up every three years?
Yeah.
All right. Now, we don't know. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, there you go.
Now, go back.
To the script.
Public hearings.
Okay, so, I will now open this Agenda item for a public hearing. It is 7:15 PM. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the ordinance, please come forward.
For clarification, this is ordinance 244, is that right?
244.
Okay.
No one... Okay. I will now close the public hearing at 7:17.
Don't we have two more items?
No, this would be this particular public hearing. At this point, you can ask for staff report or background questions.
Okay, so...
I can give you a background, staff report. Explain why. It doesn't say. I'm here. Or does it say? If you read it, it says questions from councilors or...
Okay, it says, "I'll undertake motions to amend the language."
Well, that's not until after. That's down in Old Business.
All right, so, could we get a staff report?
Sure. Our code currently provides that we have to, if we're going to amend any provision of a chapter, we have to repeal the whole chapter and put a whole number in there, which made sense for convocation and keeping track of what is current code. You just pull that chapter out, you put the new chapter in. It was real easy to do. However, there is now case law that says that if you have an old provision that has been in there for a long time, and you do that, you repeal it and make it new, it becomes new. And so, it leaves open for challenge, particularly in issues of franchises and contracts and that kind of thing, that they can say, "Oh, that's a new provision. You can't enforce that against us." And so, it kind of loosens... It makes it difficult for us to enforce some provisions that we want to enforce in our code with regard to a variety of things. And our council strongly recommends that we change this so that it's only amending those provisions of code that we really want to amend, so we can keep our old provisions strong and firm. So, this was a recommendation. And as Duke said, mentioned earlier, it's more of a housekeeping thing to keep up with current case law and things that are happening, of course.
Which is very important.
So, now you can move on to the next public hearing. If there's no more questions, anybody.
Can we not have a second reading?
Not until Old Business.
Okay.
Just like I said, we had too many public hearings. Should have done them individually, that would have been way better. We had too many public hearings and it separated everything.
Okay.
Okay, so, what's next, then?
The public hearing, B, conditional use permit.
So... Now I'm going to this script, is that right?
Yeah, at some point in time, staff is supposed to give something on that.
It's in here.
Oh, it is in there, okay.
This evening, we have a public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit to waive rear yard setback requirements for a lot line adjustment as applied for by the City of Dune City. These proceedings will be recorded. This hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the City and the State of Oregon. This is a Type 3 quasi-judicial procedure. Staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria, which have also been listed in the staff report. These are criteria the council must use in making a decision. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward this criteria or other criteria which you believe that applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the City and parties involved an opportunity to respond to the issue would preclude an appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Any party interested in a land use matter may challenge the qualification of any Councilor to participate in such a hearing and decision. Such challenge must state facts relied upon by the party relating to a Councilor's bias, prejudgment, conflict of interest, or other facts on which the party has concluded that the Councilor will not make a decision in an impartial manner. Does any Councilor wish to declare a conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact? Does any public... Does any member of the public wish to challenge a Councilor's impartiality? I will now open the hearing for the conditional use permit. It is 7:22 PM. And could we please have a staff report?
Certainly. This issue is to... The application for conditional use permit was to resolve a longstanding issue we've had with the City Hall building in that it was discovered that even though it was built in 1993, after having made application for conditional use permit at that time to encroach upon the setback of the properties behind us, current setbacks, say, 10 feet, and they wanted to encroach on that because they knew it would be less than 10 feet. At least at that point in time, that's where they thought the property line was. And then, when the new property owners bought the property, as a result of that purchase, a neighbor came forward and had the whole area surveyed. And it was at that time, in 2012, that we discovered that our building actually encroaches on the property back there. We actually are five feet over on their property when they built the new addition and all that stuff after the building, after the fire burned it down. So, that's why we're here tonight. We've known that we've had this encroachment issue. We've been negotiating with the property owners for quite some time unsuccessfully. We have now reached an agreement. And I think it is something that the City can live with, which is that they will convey the back portion... There's two lots back there. They'll convey the 5 foot 3 inches of that lot to the City where our building sits now. But on this lot over here, they have a shed in place back there that the prior owner had built and made application to the City for a variance to the setbacks, which was approved. So, rather than mess with that variance and make, you know, the possibility of them having to tear that shed out, they have already agreed and signed an easement to us in perpetuity to use the 5 foot 3 inches for whatever use we want to use it for. So, and we have that easement, it's been signed, and it's been recorded. So, tonight is merely... The conditional use permit is to allow the boundary line adjustment to take place so that they can convey to us that 5 foot 3 inch swath of property across the back of that lot. And in exchange, we build a fence. And that's it. That's the terms of the settlement. Now, you know that there was a letter that was sent to Dune City by a local resident who expressed some concerns and made some recommendations. I will let you know that I contacted the Fire Marshal, who came out specifically for... To examine the building with regard to threat of fire or danger of fire with its current location and how it might affect anything. And he said that as far as he's concerned, this building is safer than the ones that surround us. We're the safest building in the area. So, also to let you know, this individual contacted Representative McCulain's office, who contacted me and asked for information related to this issue. I sent her everything that we had, including the staff report. And they seemed satisfied that we had met all of the things that we needed to do and that it was a negotiated settlement, and they didn't want to get into the middle of it. This did go before the Planning Commission, which is on page 6 of the report. Okay. And the Planning Commission makes a recommendation for approval. They had their public hearing and also took public comment and discussion. The diamonds were present at the time. They asked a few questions of them. And so, the findings, as written in the staff report, that is the staff's recommendation. And when you make a ruling, if you're going to accept and approve the conditional use permit, you need to also first accept the staff report and the findings.
Do any councilors have a question of this stamp at this time?
Just a comment. I have visited Jamie and prior administrators. Been working on this for quite some time. I read the letter. I think there's some valid points in here from Ms. Jackson. It's just that it's, you know, things were done so far back in time that not any of us here had anything to do with. It seems to me that this is the easiest, cleanest, valid way to hear this going for the City right now. You know, I think there are some valid points made in here, but we have to do something.
Yeah.
And so, that's why I asked.
I'm very pleased and thrilled to hear that the Fire Marshal has said that. You know, that to me takes care of almost every consideration here other than maybe somebody back 20 years or 30 years ago didn't do the right thing. But I don't feel like that's an original sin that I should have to cope with. So, I'm very much in favor of resolving this tonight and moving on. But I'd really like to report, say...
Any further discussion? As Councilor Wells was stating, this has been a long time getting to this point of agreement, and in fact, years. And I just, you know, appreciate the fact that the diamonds were really willing and, you know, willing to accommodate this whole ordeal in a satisfactory manner because, you know, it was worrisome, and we don't like having these kinds of things over our head. And we're learning that, you know, there are several things that were done in historical, you know, in the past, that we, you know, as a council are dealing with now. And it just makes it a lot easier when we can have neighbors that, you know, are understanding of that and move forward, actually. So, those are my comments.
May I ask one quick question?
Yes, Councilor Orr.
Jamie, did... When the Fire Marshal looked at it, was there also consideration given to where those propane tanks will be located?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up, because that is kind of important. Where they are now is safe. It meets code as soon as they get tied down. But when we move them back there, they will basically be encased in concrete and tied down. And he feels like that is actually a much safer place for them to be than out here. And they will be anchored into the concrete, just as they are at the hospital and at the schools.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, we're ready for testimony? We'll be taking testimony from all those wishing to testify. If you've not done... You've not done so's. Please, if you wish to testify, either in favor of or against, please sign up over there. And we will take the testimony in favor first.
No one has signed up.
No one has signed up. So, if you are in favor of this, we'll take testimony. So, is there... Nobody's in favor. All right. We'll now take testimony from any opposed. We'll now take testimony from any opposed.
And again, no one has signed up.
All right, thank you. Counselors, do you have any specific questions for...
Nobody.
Nobody. Who's testified? Okay, all right. Advocate may request that the record be held open. Does the advocate desire to hold the record open?
No. No, we do not.
No, we do not, okay. All right. That seems to take care of everything. I'll now close this public hearing at 7:30. We'll now move on to deliberation. So counsel, we may... Here's the three things we can do. We can recommend approval of the conditional use permit. We would also need to accept the staff report and the findings in the staff report in that same motion. We can recommend if the conditional use permit with conditions of approval or modify the findings of fact or anything like that if we want to amend. We can recommend denial of the conditional use permit. So everyone understands what the options are. Okay.
I would like to know approval of the staff reports and to recommend that we accept the finding of fact.
Findings of fact.
And to accept the conditional use permit.
Okay, that's perfect, you guys. Motion set. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Oh, do we need a...
What was the second?
Do we need a roll call?
Does it say that on that one?
It does. It does not.
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous, okay. That's it. Yay, moving on.
Well, we approved the staff report. Did we?
We did.
The whole thing was in there.
The whole thing, the whole Mary Ann was in there.
All right, thank you.
We've learned. Learning, we're still learning that. And I still have to have these scripts, okay. So... Conditional use permit. All right, now we have resolution series number 217, number 11, certifying that Dune City provides four municipal services enumerated in section 1 ORS 221.760. I will now open this agenda item for public hearing. It is 7:34. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the resolution? No, because we do certify, I mean, we do provide the four municipal services. No one wants to comment, okay. Counselors, do you have any question on the resolution? Counselor Orr?
Those are provided by contract in some cases, is that right?
In some places, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we are required as a municipality, incorporated municipality, to provide four of those potentially seven services in order to receive our portion of shared revenues.
And we do provide those four.
And we do provide those four.
So, you want to name what the four are? Street signs, fire. Let me just read that really clearly to the audience. The four that we provide are fire protection, street construction maintenance and lighting, storm sewers, and planning zoning and subdivision control. That's the four. All right, so... Any further comments from counselors? All right, I will now close the public hearing at 7:34. No, that's when I opened it. Okay, 7:35. I will now entertain, counselors, a motion to adopt resolution 217, number 11.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved to second. That way you adopt resolution number 217, number 11. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries unanimously. Oh, all right, we're done with that. We are now moving to an executive session held pursuant to ORS 192.6601F to consider information for records exempt by law from public inspection. So it is 7:36, and we will adjourn. I will reconvene the Dune City Council meeting. It is 8:10 PM. We are down... No, pursuant to our executive session, does any counselor have a motion to declare?
I'd like to make a motion that we have our city manager work with our council to try to come to a favorable conclusion on this matter.
All right. There's the motion and the second. Need to further discussion, counselors? Hearing none, I call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, carries unanimously. And you'll work to remedy that.
And that was item D on the call.
Yes. Exactly.
Yes.
Sorry.
Executive session.
That's good, do it, girl.
All right. So we are at old business, item 11. The second reading of ordinance 244 amending chapter 10 of Dune City Code of Ordinances. All right, I will do the second reading of ordinance 224 by title only, an ordinance amending Title I, chapter 10 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances entitled General Provisions, amending language regarding the form of ordinances which amend or supplement code in section 10.17. And I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for ordinance number 224 as presented or amended if you choose.
244.
244. What did I say? Point of order? Okay, thank you.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
First you have to take a motion on second reading by title only.
So we don't have to read the whole thing?
No, no. All right, I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 244 by title only, second reading.
So moved, moved, okay, go ahead. Second then.
It's been moved. Shall it move? Counselor Orr, second. That way we read ordinance 244 by title only for the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, the second reading is now done.
She read it earlier.
Okay, fine. All right.
We could make her do it again.
Yes, all right.
Okay, but we didn't have a roll call, though.
We need to only do roll call later when you're voting on the measure. You haven't voted on the measure yet.
Roll call, please. All right, then I don't know where I am.
Now you would entertain motions to amend the language, if any.
I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for ordinance 244 as presented or amended.
So moved. Second.
The wording is now been accepted. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, all right, wording is now accepted.
The roll call will be recognized as unanimous.
Okay. So this ordinance is now hereby adopted and will become effective immediately. It says immediately, good. Says immediately.
Section 2, the rear bottom.
Okay, this one's done. Never to be resurrected. Yeah, it's 30 days, I'm pretty sure, isn't it?
Effective date, section 2, the ordinance will take effect on the 30th day after July.
Okay, which is it? That's because the ordinance disagrees with what this says.
Well, the ordinance is correct. The script would be wrong. I wouldn't have... I wouldn't have popped that.
Oh, okay. All right.
Till 30 days from now.
It says... It says this ordinance shall take effect on the 30th day after its adoption. So it will be 30 days from May 11. Prepensal will keep us straight on the dates. All right. Okay, we get to turn the agenda page to property acquisitions. And would our city administrator give us a little background on this?
Sure.
Counselor Wells and I met with Lilian Peterson to discuss and the property that we're talking about is the property that is kind of corner across the street, closest to the overlook. Okay. We met with Lilian Peterson, who is here tonight, to discuss the possibilities and what she would like to see out of it and tell us where she was coming from. And the problem at that point was that the property had not yet been turned over to her 100%. Well, tonight, on her way in, she has a copy of the deed so she can now officially negotiate on behalf of that particular piece of property. And I don't know if you would like her to come forward and talk about what she would like to... What she would like to see as part of negotiations or if you want to just direct the committee that you appointed to continue to meet with her and work out the details.
Oh. Are we supposed to talk about this in public?
We can. Vote.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah. Only if she wants to talk.
Okay. Ms. Peterson, would you like to talk about this a little bit?
Well...
If you would, come up to the microphone so we can hear you better. I'm shouting because she's hard of hearing. That's not...
I sat for a moment and needed oil gun to my joints.
We know the feeling.
Well, I suppose it goes. The cord is... The cord is short, it's under the table. Oh, there we go. Now you can pull it, Orr.
My daughter and I own a piece of property that she wouldn't sign for me to sell. So I thought about this for a long time and I finally decided the best way to do it is to give her a piece of property in exchange for this piece of property. So when she found out it was only $320 a month income off from it, she didn't act like she was too interested. But then I remembered now it's 360 a month. So her son told her, "Mom, you better trade her because you'll need that when you retire." Lo and behold, she finally decided she would trade me my beauty shop for this piece of property. Now, my beauty shop, I haven't had it appraised, but one downtown sold for 125. Mine is on the highway and it's well taken care of inside and has relatively new roof. And I figure it's worth at least 110,000. So that's what I did in exchange for this piece of property of no income. So that's where I'm coming from. Now I'm willing to sell a portion of it. I haven't decided how much because I don't know where the lines are. And I think you were going to look into seeing if you could have a line adjustment because who wants two strips of lots being parallel with pavement? You need to go north and south and not west and east. So that's where we are. If we can get the line adjustment done, then I would sell a portion.
Okay.
That's where I'm coming from. And I haven't had it appraised and somebody tells me, "Oh, you better have it appraised." Well, I haven't done that. So that's where I'm coming from. So that's a word of thought. You guys can think about this. And the other thing is, it kind of depends on what you put next to my piece of property. You know, I don't want something right up against my line.
Sounds like our committee would be...
I'm on the committee.
Counselor Wells?
I think we had a good discussion the first time that we met. I think we need to continue with that. I think there's way too many variables out there to even attempt to have a discussion on that right now. I think the committee needs to meet with Peterson again.
Okay.
There's also well already on property. There's a water tank, there's sewer system, and there's poles for electric and for phone for one mobile home or motor home post. Now, my thinking is I want motor home posts in there so I can rent out the space like for two days a week or something like that. I don't want somebody living there and then having a whole bunch of stuff sitting around. That's my attitude, whether it does me any good or not, I don't know.
So, Ms. Peterson, would you be willing to work with our committee and just kind of talk to them about it and they'll let us know what you decide?
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yes. That sounds to me fine. You got my phone number.
Yep, yes, we do.
Yeah. My cellphone, call my house. You can't even remember to write your number down.
Okay.
He's retired. Not retired. He's an older World War II veteran, turned 90 last month.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah. It's a chore, but he's doing well. Anyway, I'll work with you. And you have to call me on my cellphone.
I've got it.
At my house phone.
I'll have my people call your people.
He said he'll have his people call your people.
That's it, I guess, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'll sit on the hook there. Thank you.
Thanks for coming by. Thank you for coming out, Ms. Peterson.
Oh, you're welcome. I've worked all day painting, so I feel decrepit. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, that brings us to resolution series 2017, number 10, Approval Optimative Subdivision Plan. The Woods at Little Wohink. That's a nice name. The Woods at Little Wohink. Do you have some just background? Background?
I provided background. Actually, no, I didn't. What I did is just gave you a copy of the court order. The background is pretty much described in the resolution.
Right.
However, while I have you on the resolution, there is a typographical error.
Yes.
On page two of the resolution. Paragraph three, where it says a covenant shall be imposed on all lots which will limit the size of lots to no more than 8,000 square feet. It's lawns.
Oh, it is lawn.
Lawns.
Supposed to be lawn.
It's supposed to be lawns.
Okay. That was in the court order, but I didn't realize which was which.
This is supposed to be verbatim what is in the court order.
Okay.
Okay, by way of history for the record, a subdivision preliminary plat was filed with the city. A lot of discussion back and forth regarding the preliminary plat, which resulted in a Luba appeal. And the Luba appeal did not, as I understand it, go in favor of what the city council was thinking. And so they appealed it to the circuit court where the circuit court ruled in favor of the subdivider and instructed the city council to approve the preliminary plat with conditions as set forth here. After the ruling came in, that particular city council was instructed by legal counsel that they needed to approve the preliminary plat. The council appointed a couple of citizen members to do an investigation. to do an investigation into the issue. And when they came back and did their investigation, it completely distracted the city council away from doing what they were supposed to do, which was approve the preliminary plat, because that's what the court told them to do. And they started, they got sidetracked with trying to figure out what they can do and what changes they could make to keep this from happening again, which resulted in the chapter 155 as we know it today. So, in the meantime, that person who tried to do the subdivision filed bankruptcy, and the property went back to one of the creditors, who was the current owner. And now he is contemplating, he would like very much to move forward with the subdivision, but, which you would think after 10 years, the time would run. But no, until the council approves the preliminary plat, that 180-day clock doesn't start ticking. So here we are, 10 years later, and that clock needs to go. We need to do what, the council needs to do what it was instructed to do years ago and approve this preliminary plat with the conditions that were set forth at that time. So that is what we're trying to do, is clean up what happened before. The real estate representative for the property owner is here, if you have any questions of him. Mr. Blackstone.
I have a question. And that is simply, does the, the court order does not apply specifically to the owners at the time, it applies to the property. Is that correct?
It applies to the subdivision application.
Right. No matter who now owns.
Has the subdivision application.
Okay, thank you.
And there may have been codes that have changed since then that add additional requirements, but we can't go beyond that right now. That could come. You don't go to final plat until you get preliminary plat first. And then as it moves forward, and you have inspections, and you say, oh, well, that's not going to work that way, but it will work this way over here. There may be some minor changes that end up under consideration at the final plat level, which again, we'll go through the whole course, which is through the planning commission first, and then to the council, and you know, with public hearings all the way. This is kind of a housekeeping thing, but it's really old. Somebody brushed it under the rug and we forgot about it.
Yeah. So where are we with this then?
Well, we need to approve it.
You have to approve it.
We've done the hearings and...
It's all done.
Yeah, it's all done. We're in our order.
Yeah, we're following our order.
I mean, as far as where are we with the hearings and...
Well, it all went through hearings. That's why it was appealed. It went through the, it was, it, the decision was negative for the property owner. The property owner appealed it to Luba. Luba ruled in favor of the property owner. City of Dune City appealed it to the circuit court, and the circuit court ruled in favor of the property owner. And that's where we are now. So it's been through everything. Preliminary's been through everything. And I'll be honest with you, I've looked at this. It's a beautiful subdivision. They've, you know, dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's. Now let's, let's give them a chance to do it.
I agree.
To see it happen.
Yeah.
That's me.
So the counselors just need to make a motion for the final and accept the...
Approve the final plat with the conditions set forth in the court order.
So moved. Second.
Oh, that was quick. Any further discussion, counselors? Hearing none, I call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, awesome. Okay with that? Yeah, we're on it.
It's not 90 days, start clicking.
That is not good. Okay, so that's, that's it, because we've already taken care of item D.
Yes.
All right, we're up to reports. My report simply is, let's all go out Saturday and have fun at the triathlon, and it's kind of an all-day event for the athletes, and you know, let's just make it happen. So that's it, that's my report. Counselor Wells?
My report is, I'm glad I pulled my hamstring so I don't have to ride that damn bicycle.
Oh.
Nice going. Good planning.
Good planning. Oh, my goodness. All right, Counselor Meyer?
We still have good water, so...
Yes, we do.
According to the, even with all the weather we've been having, and rain, 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 rain. Such a reading is a little good, and I'm glad to be where we are.
Yes. Okay, Counselor Orr, do we have a report?
I don't think we've, Jamie, I don't, we haven't moved any further yet on the Silk Coast roads.
No, we have not.
So we'll get back to that.
Back when we have. Counselor Palmer's reached the court. All right, take it away, Ms. Mills.
I attended the wheel on meeting. Most of the trainings that they announced have already taken place. But one that's going to be exciting, and I know it's a typo on the reported sample, will be June 8 at 10:00 AM. They're doing a scenario at the port where there is, the scenario is that a ship is on fire, there are four victims in, there's four people stuck on the ship, and the ship is burning with hazardous materials. So the coast guard's going to be involved, the fire station, the ambulance, and of course, the court to test all of the communications and the emergency systems associated with that kind of disaster again. There's also another test in September regarding on-sing rings that displaced people in shelters, and it was all spawned from this year's high rains and flooding. Walt Zandy, who is a former Dune City resident, has now moved away. He was the one that we always work so closely with.
Sure, Walt, yeah. So he moved far away, huh?
He has moved away to be closer to his children. And the Lang County Health Department has reported that monks are back. The state of Washington has reported over 1,000 cases. Lang County has only five recorded cases. But if anyone should demonstrate symptoms of monks, they should be isolated for up to 25 days. And the next meeting will be...
We're losing control.
That's all for the, we're working on the budget for emergency services right now, too, so.
Yeah, and reminder to counselors, there's a budget committee meeting on Thursday.
Right, for our budget. You ready for my report?
Yes.
We welcomed Jan Savienza as the new permit tech on May 1, and I'm very, very glad that she is here. I hope the other staff members are as well. There were 13 permits issued in April, one structural, seven electrical, four mechanical, and one plumbing. And we also issued one permit for a ministerial boundary line adjustment. Northwest Code Professionals, we have historically referred to them as the Building Department. They have, they've been reorganized, and they have a new name, and it is the Northwest Code Professionals. It's still Dave Martier and the crew that does the inspections.
I'd like to say that's a better name.
Yeah, less confusing. Okay, the planning commission met on, it met on April 18. No, excuse me, the CAC, the 155 CAC met on April 18, and the planning commission met on April 27, and they're moving forward with chapter 155.1, .2, and .3. And the planning commission is actually moving toward establishing goals, and they did establish their goals, and continue to review chapter 155.4. We did submit the grant application to report improvements to the signage at Bo Ram and the repaired Silk Coast River overlook. As indicated earlier, Counselor Wells and I met with Lilian Peterson. We continue to work on the water usage reports and continue to correct, update, and correct them. I'm also working with one of the city's engineering firms to bring our water right permit up to date with points of diversion. I'm trying to find someone who wants to spend extended amounts of time on Wohink Lake with a boat, giving me GPS longitude and latitude measurements for every pump that's out there so that we can get all those points of diversions.
I don't even see how that's possible.
Well, most of the pumps are marked for the float or something, so people don't run over them. So it's going to be a challenge. It's going to be a challenge. But it has to be done. It has to be done. We have to go out and, and for every, wherever there, it's only 180 properties right now. So we have to figure out which 180 properties are not already on the contract, I mean, on the permit for diversions, and identify those that need to be added. And actually, if I can just figure out the point in time when the city failed to do what they were supposed to do with regard to amending their permit for points of a diversion, then I can just assume all houses built since then, since that date, need to be identified. And so I'm trying to track it as many different ways as I can to make it as easy as possible and cheap as possible. And we can do the work on potholes in the city, drainage issues, debris removal, and other matters relating to regulations within city limits. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank very much the county road team for getting out there and brushing and cutting the tree limbs and sweeping and making it all nice and safe for our triathletes this weekend.
That's good timing.
Timing, and also the crew of Honey State Park.
Yes.
Was out today also. And that's all I have. Okay, for the good of the order, Counselor Orr?
Nothing further.
Okay, Counselor Mallon?
Nothing.
Counselor Wells?
Enjoy the triathlon.
Enjoy the triathlon.
It'll be a good one.
Counselor Meyer?
I think I'm excited about the triathlon. I hope the weather cooperates with, gives us a break.
Counselor Montgomery?
Nothing new with me.
Nothing new? Counselor Porset?
Nothing.
Okay. I had the pleasure of, the fragrance of these beautiful lilacs today. And if you'll notice, the staff has decorated with teal ribbons in honor of our declaration last month that May is Health and Fitness Awareness Month, and you know, precautionary, get yourself, get your checkups and be healthy. And this is, teal is the ovarian cancer color. So thank you to the staff for, for this. Anything else, counselors? Hearing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Moved to second, and it's 8:35. Yay, let's eat cake.